Good evening. Welcome to the March 16th, 2023 Board of Education meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and at this time, I'll call on Ms. Peters to give our invocation.
William Bill Dennis Lutz of Washington, Pennsylvania, was born to the late Merlin and Dorothy Lutz on October 29th, 1942, in Cannonsburg Hospital. He died suddenly on February 19th after vacationing in Florida with his siblings. He is survived by his children Matthew Lutz, Carrie of Kill Devil Hills, Hayden Lutz, Aaron of Westford, Pennsylvania, Nathan Lutz, Jill, Bethel Park, Pennsylvania, seven grandchildren, his sister Barbara Geis, and his brother Michael Lutz, both of Columbia, Columbus, Ohio, his lifelong friend Patricia Lutz, Washington, Pennsylvania, and many other cousins and nieces and nephews. Bill was a 1960 graduate of Bethel Park High School. He went on to graduate magna cum laude with a BS in Business from Duquesne, Duquesne?
Duquesne.
Duquesne, sorry, University in just three years and graduated Phi Beta Caps with a Master's Degree in Economics from the University of West Virginia. Bill was a self-taught musician and accomplished player of the guitar, piano, and organ, and a member of the choir. He enjoyed farming, all genres of music, golfing and golfing, Pittsburgh sports, traveling and good food. Bill was always curious, a lifelong learner, and enjoyed reading about history, science, and nature. He was usually the smartest guy in the room. His professional life saw him own multiple business ventures and hold a myriad of positions, including long-haul truck driver, heavy equipment operator, farmer, school bus driver, house flipper, director of operations and estimator at Pennsylvania Drilling Company, restaurant owner, maintenance technician, and property manager. He had a CDL Class A license with Tanker and Hazmat endorsement. He was a good teacher, surprisingly good dancer, remarkably slow eater, and known for his kindness and generosity. Mostly, though, he will be remembered as a really good dad and really good friend. We just wanted to send our condolences to you, Dr. Lutz, and to your family. We're very sorry for your loss.
At this time, I'd like to introduce Mr. Parks, who's going to bring forward our Pledge of Allegiance. Parkman, I'm sorry, my brain is not working this morning, or this evening, who's gonna introduce the student who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
It's been a long day.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to start by asking Siler Goins to come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Siler. I'm here tonight to talk a little bit about a really cool program that we have at Currituck County Middle School, and it's called Our Career Cafe. And it's organized by Ms. Haley Bartolata, and she does a really wonderful job with that. And I've got three students here tonight, Rachel Britton, Siler Goins, and Shannon McCosky, that are gonna talk a little bit about it. So to start off, I think Rachel's first.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Parkman and Ms. Daniels, for highlighting the career expansion program. Thank you, Board of Education members, for devoting your time to improving the system that will help us become the best versions of ourselves. My name is Rachel Britton. I am a sixth grader at Currituck County Middle School, and we are excited to share with you some of the opportunities Ms. Bartolata has provided. As sixth graders, we complete career assessments and surveys, plus we can participate in Career Cafe Moments. We've heard that in seventh grade, we will have opportunities to explore those interests further by participating in hands-on activities and field trips. I will now turn it over to Siler Goins, so he can talk to you about the assessments.
Thank you, Rachel. I'm Siler Goins. During career and technical education classes, we take the time to complete a career cluster interest survey. This survey is a part of a program called Pathful Explore. The career cluster interest survey gives us prompts like learning how things grow and stay alive, or collecting evidence to solve a case. Then we select how we feel about it. After we complete the assessment, it matches our interests to career fields based on the activities we enjoy the most. We do understand our interests can change as we gain knowledge and experiences, but it's valuable to understand how our interests relate to the activities that are found in different careers. Now Rachel will tell you about Career Cafe Moments.
At the beginning of the year, we completed a survey asking what careers or topics we would like to learn more about. Throughout this school, during our lunch, we go to the media center to learn more about different careers and participate in activities. Local professionals share what they love about their job, why they chose that career, and the skills required to do their job. Sometimes they bring in samples of their work or activities to teach us things like how to read an X-ray or how energy works. We have a chance to ask questions and learn from the questions asked by our peers. Local colleges have shared information about programs we can participate in, even in high school, to gain the skills required for different professions. It's interesting to listen, learn, and think, is this something I could do? Shannon will now tell you a little bit about what seventh graders get to do.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Shannon McCosky, and I'm the seventh grader representative tonight. As seventh graders, students who are in CTE courses take a career cluster interest survey and they own an interest profile to see if anything has changed over the summer. The interest profile is designed to help us discover what our interests are and how our interests relate to the world of work. We discover if we are investigative, social, enterprising, realistic, artistic, or conventional. We then explore different career paths through Pathful Explore that relate to our areas of interest. Now onto what's really fun about seventh grade: field trips. So far this year, Ms. Bartolata has offered five field trips. First, she offers the opportunity to students whose assessments fit the careers being explored. Second, she opens it to anyone interested in learning more. To learn about these opportunities, you have to be a responsible student. Check your email for field trip opportunities. Teachers have to sign off that your work is up to date, our classroom behavior is acceptable, and that we are eligible to attend the field trip. This gives us the incentive to practice employability skills of being responsible and respectful, and it encourages us to practice time management. All these trips have hands-on components, so we get the full experience. I'm looking into learning interviewing skills and conducting a mock interview in eighth grade. Here's a video that highlights some of the fun we've been having on all these activities while we learn more about ourselves.
Hi, my name is Shannon McCosky. I'm here to talk to you about my favorite field trip was when we went to COA and learned about the police department and all of the jobs that come along with it. I love that field trip because I'm very interested in a career in maybe like public safety, and I got to talk to a real-life detective and ask a bunch of questions that I've been going through. I guess public safety's always been a potential career because I like to help others, and I learned a lot how I could do that. I learned about detective work, undercover work, police departments, and certain classes you can take. And I've really, a lot of good people. I think that's gonna be a potential career, maybe.
My name is Gavin Anderson. I'm from Currituck County Middle School. I'm in seventh grade, and I went on the ag agriculture field trip. And my favorite part about that was learning about ag cooking.
And my favorite field trip I went on was the food. And my only favorite thing about it was that we got to make pasta, and I got to learn a lot about food care because I wanted to go in the chef position.
That was wonderful. That was so good. Could I ask the students to come back up and give us their names again and what grade? I was having a little bit of trouble hearing.
Shannon McCosky, seventh grade.
Siler Goins, sixth grade.
Rachel Britton, sixth grade.
Wow, thank you so much. It was great. We really appreciated that.
I love the idea that you're exploring careers before it's time to have a career. That's wonderful. Take advantage of all those opportunities so you can figure out what you'll love.
Yes, thank you. Y'all did a great job. That was a great video, too.
And thanks to all those people who came in and gave of their time and talents to help y'all and teach you. I really appreciate that also. Yeah, okay. It's now time for the public comment session. This public comment session is a time when an individual or a group can address the board about our schools. This is not a time to speak about issues or concerns involving identifiable personnel or students. Matters of this nature should be submitted in writing to the superintendent, and your concerns will be addressed. Individuals or groups will be called in the order in which they signed up, and will be asked to limit their remarks to three minutes. Please state your name and address as you come up. And the first person who signed up is Jeff Sedoma.
Good evening, members of the school board. My name's Jeff Sedoma, 101 Stepside Lane, Moayak 27958. Thanks for having us tonight. I saw the agenda for the work session earlier today, and there was a discussion in there about summer school. There was a single-page attachment to there talking about the summer school plan for 2023, and I just wanted to raise some concerns. I didn't see any plans on there. Maybe I'm misinterpreting it for anything summer school-related for anybody below third grade. And I noted that the discussion was centered around having summer school from June 19th through the 30th, only two weeks this summer. I have learned from personal experience, I have one child at the elementary school, Moayak Elementary School, she's in first grade right now. She is below achievement levels, whatever you want to call them, in reading, writing, and math at this time. She is getting assessments done, and we're working with the teacher, the principals, and all the appropriate professionals to create IEP and deal with these issues that she's having. I'm not here tonight to criticize anybody in relation to that process, but what I wanted to bring up was I'm seeing a lot of danger signs in potentially not having summer school for anybody below third grade. And I'm seeing that the system is overtaxed for, I'm not gonna say special needs kids, but I might say people that need some remedial help. She has 20 kids in her class right now, and I know that several of them anecdotally are receiving extra help. The dimensions of that, I'm not sure of, but if I extrapolate that across schools and classes, I see a kind of looming problem that there's not enough resources to deal with, and that there's gonna be a system overload. I've been seeing a lot of newspaper articles talking about news stories about learning loss. There was a great article in the Virginia Pilot the other day, March 12th, talking about in Virginia Hampton Roads area, they're seeing learning loss at different grade levels in the Hampton Roads area of up to one year for math classes and two years for reading, meaning that kids are falling, in some cases, two years behind in their reading levels and reading proficiency. Virginia is throwing a ton of money at this issue, and I think I read the fact of there's ESER III grants that have totaled $430 million for Hampton Roads cities and communities to deal with this. I don't know what North Carolina's doing about it. I wish I did. But I'm seeing this issue with the learning loss happening, a lot of it's due to COVID, obviously. We can't go back in time, but I'm very hopeful that Currituck County and the school board can figure out a way to expand summer school to all the potential grades, encompass more of the summer, and help kids regain their footing and gain a leg up and get back to somewhat normal levels of proficiency in education. I'm hoping that we will get good news as parents tonight. I'm hoping that we'll get some good news, or at least by the next board meeting. Our kids need help, and we can't do it, parents can't do this alone, that we can't make up this deficit alone. I'm hopeful that we'll figure out something to have summer bridge programs that conserve all the students that are gonna need this in the school district, and I'm hopeful that we can work together to figure out a way to help our kids. Thank you.
Thank you so much. The next person signed up to speak is Jessica Duncan. If you'd come forward. Oh, and Magnolia's coming, too.
Yes, yes. All right, I am Jessica Duncan. I am one of the ag teachers at Currituck County High School, and thank you for asking me to come out to speak during the public comment section. I would like to thank you on behalf of our FFA chapter for donating the pizza and water for the upcoming Digging Into Agriculture Day that we will be hosting, and I would like to formally invite the board to join us on April 19th at the Currituck County Rule Center for our 13th Annual Digging Into Agriculture Day, and it will be held from 10:00 a.m. until 1:30 p.m., weather permitting. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, next we have our student board member reports. Who's going first? Sophie?
Yes, thank you. Sophia?
Starting off with Central Elementary. Central had a very successful booster-thon raising funds to support our school that wrapped up with Ms. Ferris and Mr. Weichel getting slimed by the student body for meeting our fundraising goal. We look forward to having our Title I Duke Energy Science Night that will allow students and families to enjoy dinner, science experiments, and shopping at our Scholastic Book Fair. CCHS, stakeholders, your voice matters. If you have not done so, please complete the CCHS parent survey. You can access the survey in the latest CCHS Nights Stakeholder Bulletin. Science Olympiad, Elizabeth City Regional Competition, we finished second overall out of four teams in our division. See our social media postings for details about individual winners. And congratulations to Dylan Cooper on first chair for All-State Band. CCMS, congratulations to Rocco Battelli, seventh grader, who recently won first place in state for the middle school division of the National Career Development Association Poetry Contest. Also, congratulations to Wayland Chalk and Harper Bird, who both placed in the Currituck County Soil and Water Conservation Poster Contest. Wayland placed first, and Harper placed second. Finally, Currituck County Middle School is having a St. Patrick's Day dance tomorrow from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Greggs Elementary School, Greggs will have our monthly PTO Title I event on the 23rd of March. The focus will be camp read aloud. We will have tents set up throughout the building, along with reading by campfires. Each tent will have a book focus that a staff member will be reading. We will also have our Spring Book Fair next week and Thursday, the 23rd. We will have extended hours for our families to shop together. Jarvisburg Elementary School, Jarvisburg was happy to host St. Master's BMX Assembly for our students this month, sponsored by our PTA. We also kicked off our One School, One Book, Almost Super with a local celebrity last week, Batman. We have our book fair on site this week. Our third to fifth grade students are attending a field trip to Jeanette's Pier, thanks to grant awarded through our AIG staff. We will end the week with the Scripps National Spelling Bee on Friday, in which all grade level homeroom winners will compete to see who has the top seller of JES.
Good evening. I'm gonna start with JP Knapp Early College. So our application window for the 2023-2024 Rising Ninth Graders closed this past Friday. We have 98 applicants, which is the most we've had in the past five years. JP Knapp Science Olympiad Regional Results, where overall first place earned a slot to the state competition at NC State in April. JP Knapp also earned the Spirit Award for Best Sportsmanship. Individually, JP Knapp had nine students finish in first place out of 18 total events. For individual award winners and awards, please be sure to check out our social media. Next is Knott Island Elementary. Our Read-a-thon just finished up with our students and raised $4,200 for our school. This money will be used to support our school gardening and landscape beautification projects. This past Tuesday, our first grade welcomed over 30 CCHS seniors from Ms. Person's senior English classes for a collaborative effort between the two schools. The seniors and first graders spend several hours discussing all their favorite things and will create children's books that they will design, illustrate, and write. Thank you to Ms. Roach and Ms. Person for planning such a great collaborative learning opportunity for these students. Next is Moayak Elementary. Moayak Elementary wrapped up a successful Booster-Thon Glow Run event last month, raising money for school and classroom enhancements. As a result of meeting its fundraising goal, Ms. Kelly and Ms. Taylor got turned into human ice cream sundaes. This month, we are looking forward to the Spring Book Fair, Spring Picture Day, and several spring field trips, such as the fifth graders visiting Jeanette's Pier, third graders seeing Cinderella the play at COA's campus, and the second grade visiting the Manio Aquarium. Keep an eye open for more important events as we move into the end of the school year. Next is Moayak Middle. The Bulldogs have been busy. We had an amazing pep rally celebrating our successes and having some fun. We wanted to give a shout-out to all of our talented Bulldog artists who were featured in the past weekend's Spring Into the Arts Show. We certainly are blessed with talented students and an amazing art teacher, Ms. Taylor Shaw. We welcome guests to come out and support all of our spring sports athletes, at least when the weather warms up. And lastly is Shawboro Elementary. Shawboro Elementary hosted a wonderful Title I Family STEM Night with nearly 500 attendees. This was a wonderful event where families could work together to make creative STEM-based projects. Save the date for Saturday, March 25th for our PTO Spring Vendor Fair, and March 30th for our PTO Bingo Night. These will both be excellent events.
Thank you, Sophia and Scarlett. And now we will hear a work session review from Dr. Lutz.
At our work session earlier this afternoon, Mrs. Dowd gave us an update on where we're at with school calendar, along with school start and end times. We're gonna send out a survey to our community next week that'll be open for two weeks. We encourage you to participate. We had our first budget review as we prepare to bring a budget to the board in April for approval, and we also took a look at our capital outlay as well, and we will also bring that to the board for approval at the April meeting. Took a look at Policy 4130 regarding school attendance boundaries and admission, and also our school construction update, and we'll take a look at that later on this evening.
So before we approve the agenda, I need to make a motion to amend the agenda by removing the YMCA partnership presentation because they were not able to be here tonight. So do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now I need to have a motion to approve the agenda.
I make a motion that we approve the agenda as amended.
Okay. Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so motion carries. And now we're gonna do the school construction update.
the pictures from month to month, and you see great progress. See the beautiful front that we're gonna have at Moayak Elementary School. It's also where our bus drop-off will be with the stone front. This is the side of the addition at Moayak Elementary School. Again, the interior, note the steps that have been put in to the right. And this is all over the last four weeks. Moving into paint and getting heating and cooling systems in. Moayak Middle School, again, the easier of the two projects. The cafeteria, which will pretty much double the size of the current arrangement. Again, kudos to the cafeteria staff at Moayak Middle School who is serving Moayak Elementary School along with Moayak Middle School. Over 1,300 students.
Every day.
Every day for the last two years. Plenty of mud as it is winter, and plenty of progress as well. We thought winter missed us in February, but it has returned. Continued spring break will be another big week that's coming up. We're gonna be able to get on the interior of the school as well at that time. And the Tolls Creek site, we need to also look forward to working with our public in our schools and naming mascots and school colors for the new Tolls Creek site, and get some pictures up on our website with the renderings of the building in the near future. And again, we'll see you again on April 20th with another update.
Thank you, Dr. Lutz. And now Ms. Mazzell will bring forth budget amendments.
Good evening, Chairman Kraft, fellow board members, and Dr. Lutz. This evening I have four budget amendments for your approval, starting with the state public school fund. We had an increase of $628,399. This was a result of additional funding we received for the Transportation Department, the ARP School Bus Safety Pilot, and an adjustment to the CTE program support. For our local expenditures, we had a net here of zero. This was budget transfers for general operations. For federal expenditures-
So before we approve the agenda, I need to make a motion to amend the agenda by removing the YMCA partnership presentation because they were not able to be here tonight. So do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now I need to have a motion to approve the agenda.
I make a motion that we approve the agenda as amended.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so motion carries. And now we're going to do the school construction update.
One of the best parts about the school construction update is we're able to take the pictures from month to month, and you'd see great progress. See the beautiful front that we're going to have at Moayak Elementary School? It's also where our bus drop-off will be with the stone front. This is the side of the addition at Moayak Elementary School. Again, the interior, note the steps that have been put in to the right. And this is all over the last four weeks. Moving into painting, getting heating and cooling systems in. Moayak Middle School, again, the easier of the two projects. The cafeteria, which will pretty much double the size of the current arrangement. Again, kudos to the cafeteria staff at Moayak Middle School who is serving Moayak Elementary School along with Moayak Middle School. Over 1,300 students.
Every day.
Every day for the last two years. Plenty of mud as it is winter, and plenty of progress as well. We thought winter missed us in February, but it has returned. Continued spring break will be another big week that's coming up. We're going to be able to get on the interior of the school as well at that time. And the Tolls Creek site, we need to also look forward to working with our public in our schools and naming mascots and school colors for the new Tolls Creek site. And we'll get some pictures up on our website with the renderings of the building in the near future. And again, we'll see you again on April 20th with another update.
Thank you, Dr. Lutz. And now Ms. Mizell will bring forth budget amendments.
Good evening, Chairman Kraft, fellow board members, and Dr. Lutz. This evening I have four budget amendments for your approval, starting with the state public school fund. We had an increase of $628,399. This was a result of additional funding we received for the Transportation Department, the ARP School Bus Safety Pilot, and an adjustment to the CTE program support. For our local expenditures, we had a net here of zero. This was budget transfers for general operations. For federal expenditures, we had an increase of $729. That was the result of additional funding for Title 6B preschool, as well as various budget transfers between programs. And the last one is the other local expenditures. We received money for Chromebook fees, Medicaid fee for service reimbursement, additional NC pre-K funds, general operations, Knights of Columbus donation, as well as we had transfers within the COVID testing grant for an increase of $41,076.3. Does anyone have any questions?
Does anyone have questions? Okay, this is our, we need to take action on this. So do I have a motion that we approve the budget amendment, as Ms. Mizell presented?
And as a reminder, we did go over this in much, in more detail at the work session, just so everyone knows.
So do I?
Oh, I make a motion to pass it. Sorry.
And do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And next we have field trip request. Dr. Lutz?
We often make the field trip request after they occur because of the expediency during the time. So we had several wrestlers make the state wrestling tournament in mid-February, and our girls' basketball team won their first state playoff game and took a second trip onto Laurinburg, North Carolina, had to put up a good battle, but ultimately lost. And our girls took a trip as well.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have our consent agenda, and we do need to take action on that. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion.
Okay, and do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, consent agenda passes. So our next Board of Education meeting is April 20th. We'll have a work session at the PLC at 4:00 p.m. And then we'll have our Board of Education meeting at the historic county courthouse here at 6:30. And now we'll do board member comments. So, Mr. Banks?
First of all, last meeting we had a young student came over here and spoke, and he was accompanied by his English teacher. And at first I thought it was a family member. But it just struck me as impressive that that teacher took the time of his day to accompany that student who saw a problem that he wanted to address at the school. And I'd just like to recognize Mr. Curtis Horn for doing that. It was impressive to me. Also, I did go out to the high school and have a walk around with the school resource officer for a little while, and we discussed some things there as well.
Okay, Ms. Rose?
Well, I'd like to give a shout out to many of our winter sports athletes. I attended the awards program and hats off to our cheerleaders with their state championship. And we had several athletes who participated in postseason events for wrestling. And I know our girls for basketball. And as I understand it, we've got three athletes participating this weekend in the North Carolina versus Virginia All-Star Games Saturday at Northeastern. We have Annabelle O'Donnell, Octavia Everett, and Damian Hicks. So hats off to those students. I would also like to remind our seniors about some local scholarships available. The Currituck Education Foundation, we have three $500 scholarships. You can get information from Guidance. It's due in May, and as of right now, we don't have a lot of applicants. So I want our seniors to go see their guidance counselors because there's money waiting for you, and college is expensive. Also, the North Carolina Retired School Personnel is going to do two $500 scholarships, one for each high school. Again, see your guidance. And the last one, I probably know more about this one than any, is the Moayak Women's Club, which is a $1,500 scholarship to a senior who will be going to a four-year college and a $1,000 scholarship going to someone maybe entering the trades, maybe a two-year program. The university scholarship will also be given a shower to outfit their dorm, which is a huge expense off the parents. The $1,000 scholarship will be giving an additional $200 to help with expenses, whether it be books or gases, to cover that. I want to give a shout out to Dr. Lutz and other local celebrities who helped raise the money for our Currituck Education Foundation, which funds some of these scholarships and also many grants. We raised almost $2,000 that night in tips from our waiters and waitresses at BJ's. So hats off to all of them. And a reminder that we've got the SpongeBob Musical coming up at the high school, March 31st to April 2nd. I've got my tickets. I hope you'll get yours.
Thank you. Ms. Peters?
Yes, I would just, so I attended the Spring Into the Arts at the Currituck Middle. It was really exciting. There were a lot of people there. And it was really neat seeing all the different artwork from all of our schools displayed. There was really some amazing artwork. It wasn't just pictures. It was actual pottery and pictures and everything. So that was really neat. I just wanted to thank all the staff and volunteers that made that happen on a Saturday. I'm sure it took some time to get it all coordinated, and I just wanted to say thank you. We appreciate that. And as Dr. Lutz mentioned about the survey, I encourage parents, when we have these surveys, to please, not just parents, but any of our stakeholders, to take part in them so that we can have that feedback and to feed off the seniors. I had a Ruritou meeting on Knott's Island this past week, and seniors really do need to get out there and inquire about scholarships. We have a scholarship, and we only had one applicant, which is great for that one applicant. But there are a lot out there in your own communities. So reach out to your civic leagues, Ruritou's, you know, things like that. This is the time of year. I think that Currituck Inc. Foundation, or Currituck Foundation, Inc. you were talking about, I think that deadline's tomorrow. So for that scholarship, so that's it.
Ms. Parker?
Thank you to CCMS and to Ms. Bartalata for the Career Cafe. I've had the pleasure of speaking there before with children, and just the excitement from kids during that program is incredible. And Ms. Bartalata does just a fantastic job with that. Thank you to all the community members. I've had a lot of people reach out to me. I'm going to continue to encourage you to work the chain of commands. I know that's not always what parents want to hear when they call. But we work the chain of commands so that we know that we do that, and that's how we improve our system. So I'm going to encourage that, encourage you to continue to participate in your child's education and continue to advocate for your children so that we can improve our system to benefit all of our children. Thank you to Dr. Lutz and Ms. Dowd. At one of the last meetings, I had requested some math data, and I appreciate that they were able to supply me with that data. And it did show very clearly that our deficits lie far beyond, or far before we get to Math 1, or Math 2, or Math 3. Our deficits lie in math foundations. So I think that's going to give Currituck schools and hopefully the state an opportunity to come up with some meaningful solutions to help our struggling students. These deficiencies in math are real, and they require serious creative solutions. And I hope that moving forward, when we look at these things, we ask ourselves, are we making changes, or are we making change? Thank you.
Dr. Lutz?
First off, thank you to the board for your support through my passing of my father and also the community and the great staff that I work with. I wanted to update you on accreditation. We will have Incognia will be visiting Currituck County on April 24th for their first visit of many. Let's see. The Career Awareness Program that was presented by Currituck Middle School also takes place at Moayak Middle School as well. I wanted to point that out. And it is, as Ms. Rose said, it's a great opportunity for kids to explore careers, things that many of us did not get exposed to when we were kids. I didn't know that was, and you could see the variety of topics that were covered. There are three weeks to spring break. I probably don't need to tell our teachers that. It is truly March Madness. It started today in basketball, but we have three weeks before that break gets here. So hang in there, and thank you to the staff for their wonderful work.
Thank you. So my favorite time of my day when I taught all those years was reading aloud to my children. And so this last, week before last, I was asked to read to two elementary, two elementary schools, Shawboro Elementary and Central Elementary, and share a book with them. And so I did that, and it was really, I love it. I love it. And I got thank you cards from them, too. And on the March Madness, you led me right into it. Today I went to Griggs, and this is March Madness with a twist. A group of teachers out of Ohio started this about two or three years ago, and they are all over the country now. They had, I posted on my Facebook page, but they had a big map on the bulletin board, and they had pens for every place of schools that are doing this. And so they have library books that for the lower grades and then for the upper grades. And so they vote on those books. And so I just want to give a shout out to Ms. Bonnabeau for instituting that at Griggs. It's really, really looks like a neat program. I attended the music performance for the preview concert for Moayak Middle School, Currituck County Middle School, and Currituck County High School last week. And those students are going this coming up week to compete the actual, it was a preview concert. Now they're going to do the real deal. And so I want to just wish them good luck. And with that, I would like to ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
And a second.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.